All right. The time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. And we're going to begin with public comments. If you wish to speak at this time, please step up to the podium to address council. Okay, we'll move on to council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
Good evening, everybody. I move to approve on consent agenda item number four, number five, number six. Make sure I didn't, and since Mr. Turk is here, we'll let him speak. Number four, five, and six.
Is there anybody that wishes to pull one of those items? Is there a second for approving on consent item number four, five, and six?
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we approved on consent. Item number four, the minutes from the February 4th, 2025 regular meeting. Item number five, acceptance of the 2024 racial profiling report to be submitted to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Item number six, approval of a temporary special use permit for Austin Pets Alive to host an event that would exceed 50 attendees on April 12th, 2025 at Ford 4942 US Highway 290. And council, we do have a short agenda tonight. Our last agenda item is number seven. Consider an act on approval of an amendment to Freeland Turk Task Order number 19 for the Upper Cougar Creek and Ernest Robles Way projects. And I'll hand it over to staff for an introduction to this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a amendment to Task Order number 19 for the Upper Cougar Creek and Ernest Robles Way project. We had the first tax order that was for $74,000 and in December of 2023, we had a second, first amendment to that task order to continue on with the development of the project. We are looking at a revised second amendment for the task order and the amount of $34,232. This is, we aren't asking for a budget adjustment for this project, for this amendment. It's covered. We have the money in the project right now for this, so there will be no budget adjustment. It's just amending the task order to complete the project and take it through final acceptance as an as-built documentation. So I know Tom is here to answer any questions about this. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Council, do we have any questions for staff or for our city engineers? Councilor Rosengard?
Okay, so the original amount was 74,000 and that was for schematic drawing for the trails. And then later Home Depot Boulevard was added in and Ernest Robles was added in. The only thing I could find for the 74,000 was the 30,000, and I know that's not being discussed tonight on the agenda, was 30,000 on the original Upper Cuckoo Creek. Fast forward, then we had amendment number one. When I went to amendment number one on 1223, 121923, the amount asked for was a little greater than the 110 and thank goodness it was lower than the amount originally asked for. And now we're asking for amendment number two, 34,000. So it would help me to understand if the original started task order, but all I can find is 30,000. What's the difference? 44,000. Then amendment number one, we passed December 19th, 2023, and amendment number two. So are we simply going over each bid each time? And why are some of the invoices coming in so late from May 2024 to now? And I've already asked Tom. So, Tom?
Good evening. Thank you for all those questions, Rudy. I tried to remember them all. So in a very general and overview sense, we've been working on this project for the last couple of years. It has taken a number of twists and turns and there's been some dynamics and and sometime in the last summer, we ran out of fee. And we internally at Freeland Turk decided that we would hold on to our invoices until things settled down. And that's essentially why we're here today at somewhat of a late time. As you may remember, we took bids on the project. It was quite high. And then we went through kind of a scramble exercise to accept and award the bids and create some change orders so that we could get that price down to something that you all were comfortable with. And that was, there was a lot of dynamics involved in that. But I think everybody's happy with where we are, including, including us. So we have kept track of our time and then, and there is a summary of that in our amendment request. And whatever invoices we submit to you, we'll have detailed explanations of what each person did for all the charges. That is something that we, we do routinely. That's, that's very normal. So you, you will know what we did for the amounts. As far as the questions about the change orders and amendments, I apologize. I don't have my spreadsheet on me, but, but the, the projects started out as the design of the UCC improvements. There was some additional work added to that. And then we also combined UCC or Savannah Trails with the work that was going on on ERW and Home Depot Boulevard. So those two projects were melded together. And that was reflected in amendment number one, I believe, or two. I can't remember. Since then, this project has been added on again. Countrywide Boulevard is now part of this project. The Brody Lane Waterline is now part of this project. And we're now considering a change order to add in the Sterns Water Lane project to the overall contract. So you can kind of see how everything has kind of been melded together and packaged. It's all making really good sense as far as cost and the resources that the contractor has and, and how things are going. So it's, it's, I don't mean to paint a bad picture. It's not a bad picture. It's just come together in that way. And that's why we wanted to wait until everything kind of settled down. So I, I hope I've answered most of your questions. Is there any other questions you have?
I'm reading your email. Do you mind if I share?
This is the same email I sent to staff earlier today. Sure. Go right ahead.
So in response to some of my questions, he says, the first majority of fees we are requesting is the result of our estimate underestimating the engineering effort and some inefficiency in the workflow. The project currently in construction is a melding of five to six separate projects over a period of a couple of years. There have been some twists and turns, delays, and other project dynamics that have presented us all with challenges. Furthermore, a post-pandemic extraordinary inflationary period made accurate cost estimating difficult for our industry and as well, and us as well. These are not excuses, just the reality of the situation. At the end of the day, we worked as a team, adjusted when necessary, moved this project into construction. By any measure, the project is going well and it should end that way, too. The current contract amount for the project is $4,154,000. Franklin, Freeland Turk fee for their current project less Home Depot is approximately 500,000, including this amendment, or approximately 12% of construction. Freeland Turk has a great performance record on Sunset Valley construction projects. Final construction costs average less than 1%. 45,000 overruns for 7 million in construction over the original contract amounts. This amount is very low compared to industry contingency recommendations. Our record of low-cost overruns is real value for Sunset Valley. And then I looked at the final amount where you're showing the construction contract with the lift station. I thought we were done with that guy. The lift station, 2022 CIP projects, Jones Road Mill and Overlay, 2024 CIP coming to 6,980,000, and the final construction is 7,250,000. So a cost difference of $45,000. That 45,000, how does that relate to tonight's 34?
That spreadsheet is simply some data to, to show you that the final contract price of those projects is very near the original construction contract. What that says is there are little or no change orders that are associated with engineering work. That's a measuring stick for us nerdy engineers. If we don't have any change orders on projects, that's a really good thing for us. That means we've done well. And that's obviously a good thing for you. So I'm just showing you how we have performed on
In the past?
In the past, yes.
Got it. Okay. All right. Is there anything else you wish to add as to the 74 I mentioned earlier? I realize that's not on the agenda tonight, but I need to just make all the math work in my head and I can't get it.
Yeah, I can answer that one. That was, the original task order was approved on February 7th of 2023. It was 38,000 for surveying, environmental studies, and geotech investigations, and 36,000. So when you add those together, that's the 74,000 for the trail design and some permitting things with TCEQ. So that's where those numbers came together to make the 74,000.
And all I could find when I was trying to do research is 30,000 for schematic plan for Upper Cuckoo Creek?
Yeah, that's not for this project here. I don't know where that number's coming from, the 30,000. I'd have to look and see what that is. But the task order was approved in 2023, February 7th, and it was for the 74,000.
Okay. Thank you for doing that research. I appreciate it.
We did, we did have the previous Upper Cougar Creek task order with that initial design.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that's what that
That could have been, and that very well could have been something, the previous, everything that happened previously. Yeah.
Mayor? Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add. So the task orders that we have with you are an hourly not-to-exceed amount, which means our invoices to you will not exceed that amount unless you have authorized it. And that's why we're here today. We underestimated the effort and the amounts in the amendment request reflect that. But it also works the other way. I've got a list here of a handful of projects that we have done for Sunset Valley where we did not use all our fee. Lovegrass Pond, we only used about 50% of our fee. That was a $5,000 savings. Sunset Trail in Lone Oak, we used about 75% of our fee. That was a $31,000 savings. US 290 Sewer Main Repair, $45,000 fee. We only used 92% of that. That was about a $4,000 savings. On the 21, 22 CIP construction management, we didn't use $17,000 of our fee. On Jones Road, we didn't use about $12,000 of our fee. So sometimes you win, sometimes we win. Yes, ma'am?
I'll wait for the mayor. Yes, and jokingly, I shared with Carolyn earlier today when I talked to my painter about bidding a project. I tell her, if, if it comes in lower, will you give me the money back? And she, she laughs and says, well, there's sometimes you win and sometimes I win. So with that, I move to approve an amendment to Freeland Turk Task Order number 19 for the Upper Cuckoo Creek and Ernest Robles Way project in the amount of 34,232.
Okay, so let's take care of the motion and then we'll open it back up for discussion. So the motion is to approve. Is there a second for that?
One second.
Okay, let's go in and enter back into discussion. Mayor Proton?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. First, I'm looking at the numbers here and if we look at the, the costs, the hours you had from May to August of last year, that's the majority of hours that were being billed for here. And I know your explanation was that because of all the changes that were going on, you held these back. But I think for us, it would have been nice if these costs had been in last year's budget and not this year's, since that's when they happened. Do you have another set of costs that are coming up that you haven't billed for us for yet? Or is this everything up to this point?
So the amount that we are requesting includes the hourly charges from from last summer summer through January of this year.
Right.
We still have some costs that are going to be associated with continued construction administration.
Okay.
That, that is also included in the fee that we're requesting. So this should be it.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought you said first you have some additional costs coming up, and then you said this should be it. So which, am I misunderstanding here?
So, so the, the $46,670 that we are requesting is a combination of two numbers. One is charges from the past summer through January of this year.
Right.
And then fee to cover the remaining construction administration through the end of construction.
Okay. Okay.
So...
In the backup, it's this, there's two, there's the two charts, right? So the, the first is the unbilled through January, and then, right, and then...
Okay. Second question, you said that you had detailed invoices that showed all the work that had been done. I don't see anything like that in my backup. Have those just been provided to staff?
So we provided a, a summary. When we submit the invoices, we will have detailed backup of each monthly invoice.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood both of those.
Yeah, and it's, and it's typical for the invoices, you know, I see them because I'm signing the checks, but we can easily provide any invoices that are requested to council, as if it'd be helpful in assessing, you know, the engineering work. And that's something that I think once we, we have those, we can submit them and be useful for you guys to see them as well. And I, one thing I was running through my mind, too, and maybe, maybe I don't know the answer to this, I thought, I, I thought I did know the answer to this, but when we create projects in our CIP, and we're talking about multiple separate projects that are getting combined into them, those, those budgets are essentially absorbed into this combined project. We're not executing on those, using up all the engineering fees, and then having to, you know, add them to this project and think, you know, essentially doubling up on the engineering fees. It's, in essence, we're, we already have budget for these, we're zeroing out those separate task orders, and we're creating an aggregate task order. Right? So that's why, one reason we're not asking for additional budget funding in, in areas. Well, so let me give an example. So Ernest Rovels Way was a CIP project. It was separate from Upper Cougar Creek. We combined it because there's efficiency in the engineering work and the construction work to do that. Ernest Rovels Way, before it was combined, there was an engineering fee assessed as part of our budget. Right? And we didn't fully execute on that, or we didn't execute on it at all, but essentially that budget that we'd reserved for Ernest Rovels Way was moved over to the combined project, right, rather than having two separate projects. So that's part of what we're talking about with the previous amendment, was that aggregate, you know, the aggregate.
And I think part of the issue with this one is because it was Upper Cougar Creek, Home Depot Boulevard, Ernest Rovels, and they were, Home Depot Boulevard kind of bounced between some of the projects. And so I think that's some of the confusion with this one right here, is that with the aggregation of those projects and stuff. So Home Depot Boulevard will now be its separate project for the future. But we have all the work we've already done on it, but when we go to finish that project, it'll be a separate task order for this. It's not, it's no longer aggregated with this project.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Johnson?
You cited a number earlier about like, how much was spent and how much were Freeland Turk fees? And what was the, what was the timeframe? Was that just one year? So it was like $4 million in total expenses and 500 grand or something was Freeland Turk?
Yeah. If you, if you just take a look at the, the fee and the construction dollars, dollars associated with, with what's in the construction package now, the, the fee came out to be about 12% of construction.
Right. And that, that wasn't in here, right? I was like looking for that.
No. That was in a separate email.
In the email we got today.
We can forward that all to council as well. I believe Councilwoman Rosengarden read from and mentioned the email, but we can send that to you. It was something that the engineer prepared and sent to staff.
Okay. And what was the timeframe for that number?
That would have been about two years.
About two years.
Two years. And you mentioned that that was, that all projects that Freeland has done with us?
No. Those numbers did not seem to fit anything that I knew about, so, okay.
That was just a question.
So, Councilman, the, the significance of the percent of construction is this. You know, when, when we present to you task orders and amendments, percent of construction is, is kind of a bellwether, a kind of a, am I, am I about where I should be number? And 12% is pretty good for work in Sunset Valley because of your permitting requirements with TCEQ, coordination with the City of Austin and TexDOT and Travis County. You have, you have a lot of regulatory things going on here. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were somewhere where we should be, so to speak. If I came to you with a fee of 20% of construction, I would have a lot of explaining to do. But 12% is pretty reasonable for the project, its size, complexity, and what have you.
You know, I, when I think about our relationship with your company, I'm mostly just, I, I like the work. We like to do fun things. There's also things that we, we just have to keep up with, that you help out with. And I always just look at it as, do we do this in-house, or do we go out to someone? And I know the resources that you bring to bear, and there's a bit of a premium, but I think you're, I think you're good. Nothing has really like ever come back to us and found to be not up to par. So I just like to, to hear those numbers and just say like, well, how many, how many in-house engineers would that have been? And then look at the, the org chart and be like, yeah, okay, maybe this is like a good relationship to keep going. But that's all my questions ever are, really, just like, do we have them working here? Or do we farm it out? And Carolyn usually tells me it's, it's nice to farm it out, so that's it.
Other questions from council before opening it up to members of the public? All right. If you want to talk to this agenda item, please go ahead and step forward and address council.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I just have noticed that I have a harder time following the bouncing ball in terms of engineering, because there's the CIP batch, which we all know I'm not a fan of. And then there's combined projects. And, and so I think it's, it's good, I mean, 12% is a nice number, as long as that's the whole of the number, and it's not in the shifting, in the shifting buckets. And that's what I'm, what doesn't look as clear to me. And perhaps I would just like to see more numbers so that I could see that. But I look at numbers in Public Works, and I look at numbers in Budget, and I look at numbers here at council. And it just, it just isn't as smooth as I would like, where I could say, oh, this percentage is this. You know, I can hear this is percentage, but I'm kind of like Councilmember Rosengard, I want to see that this percentage is that. And it's harder to follow the bouncing balls in our current process, for me. Maybe I'm the only one. But I'm just saying that because I try to follow the bouncing balls. I happen to remember where the 30K was, because I remember going 30K. So it was in my head, so I, I knew where that one was. But, but so my memory was that we, we had a construction manager that was sort of our in-house construction manager, which I don't think was the same engineering firm that we used. Is that true, Carolyn?
I'd have a separate construction manager at one point in time. That was a separate person that did some stuff.
And I just really want to throw my hat into that idea again, because I really like checks and balances. And I really don't like having the engineers supervise the projects. I like having a check and balance where somebody else is looking, and they're following the bouncing balls that perhaps I'm missing. So that's just something I want to put on the table, that when we go forward, we consider not having the engineers be the construction managers. I really like the other system, and I'm going to, of course, not be thrilled with the CIP because it's just one more place for me to say, are our costs in line? Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council, staff, or the engineer? When we, and it is one of those things that when we have these multi-year projects, we often approve budgets, you know, several years ago, that don't get actually into construction as we're seeing for, you know, in this case, two years, but sometimes it can take multiple years. And because of the way we do budgeting, you know, we have to essentially redo the budget every year in order to account for that, and it does make it a little tricky sometimes. I think it is useful to go back and look at our previous CIP, you know, kind of score, scorecard saying which projects that we move forward with, which should change, where did they kind of, they merge together? And that, that's just for me a useful exercise. And so if council also finds that useful, we can work with staff on getting kind of a, going back five years, because we are about to enter into the next five years CIP planning, and I think it's useful for us to educate ourselves on, you know, what we could do better with each iteration of that, so. Councilmember Rosengard?
Now, even if we group a bunch of projects together, I believe there's, there were seven of them, and are there still seven at one point? I went through and was reading a lot of notes. When you group them together, you should still have a task order for each one individually so you can keep track of all the expenses for each one. So at the end of the day, you can look at it, and you could say, okay, I know how much this job costs. Next year, when we have to do another one, which is very similar, it's going to be about this, this amount. Okay?
The construction is tracked individually like that.
Good.
I think engineering at times provides more of a challenge, because, as I say, if we're doing a water line on a street, we've got a water line and a street and these other pieces that are all part of that construction. So we do, the construction is a little easier to track as far as what, what part of the project goes into what bucket.
Yeah. I understand. Thank you.
With no more questions, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. So the motion is to approve the amendment to Freeland Turk Task Order number 19 for Upper Cougar Creek and Ernest Rovels Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes. And with that, council, we are ready for a motion for council met.
Motion to adjourn.
Right. Is there a second for that? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We are adjourned at 6:29. Rob was off by seven minutes.